Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Committee of the Whole to order. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Walsh?
I am here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Milliwan.
Here. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We do. So we received one emailed public comment that was from Kelby Cumston. It was provided to council earlier today. And then we have one in-person public comment, and that'll be Scott Steinling.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the city council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Okay, you may proceed.
Scott Steinling, Ward 5. My concern is I know that 2022 is over, but we're looking at 2023. For the fireworks, I have been bringing it up at each year in the council, so I thought that this may be better at the Committee of the Whole. The city insists on setting these off. As Normal has theirs. Since when did Bloomington have to be like Normal? So I guess the thing that my concern is Normal has good streets. Bloomington has rotten streets. If they'd have been keeping these up a little each year, we wouldn't be in crisis mode now. And materials and labor were a heck of a lot less then. The other thing is the roads. As I've said before, they're in horrible condition. There is a stretch of Washington Street that is in horrible condition. You get down to where it's paved, it's fine. You come around City Hall, the government center, the sidewalks are all ADA accessible. And you get into the real world, and they're not ADA accessible. So it really irritates me to think that, you know, everybody is blind to the fact that, the fact that, you know, they think they can get away with it. The other thing, it amazes me that Bloomington and Normal have the intergovernmental agreement. And, but there's Bloomington Normal Public Transit System, the Bloomington Normal Airport Authority, and the Bloomington Normal Use Tax. But why not just merge the cities and be done with it? It'd be a heck of a lot, make a heck of a lot more sense. Because right now, you're duplicating everything. Thank you. That's all I've got to say for tonight.
Thank you, Scott.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And there is only one item on the consent agenda, so nothing to pull here, hopefully not. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute it says present.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Becker. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The items passes are known as to announce. Next item on the agenda is a regular agenda, item 5A, Presentation Regarding a Proposed Housing Navigation Demonstration Project and Associated Housing Stability Navigator Position as requested by the Administration Department. So I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This has been an ongoing conversation for the past few months and have met with various stakeholders with this project and this possibility. Matt Burgess is with Home Sweet Home Ministries, and Erin Duncan is joining us virtually, I believe. She's going to be a co-presenter, and she is with Prairie State Legal. Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I think Erin and I both wanted to just quickly introduce ourselves and then share our presentation with you. So I'm Matt Burgess. I'm the CEO at Home Sweet Home Ministries. I've served there for the past 13 years, the last year and a half as CEO, but prior to that as our chief operating officer. And so I've been in the community, working actively within the continuum of care of homeless service providers all that time, and have seen some of the needs that we're talking about with you this evening be longstanding issues that really came to a head as part of the pandemic experience here locally. And I'll let Erin introduce herself.
Can y'all hear me all right? I'm going to try again. Can everybody hear me okay? Let's see. I'm not sure why I'm not showing up here.
Hey, Erin. We can hear you just sharing that.
You can, okay, thank you. It's a little bit difficult here to not get feedback, and I appreciate you all accommodating me in this manner. So my name's Erin Duncan. I am with Prairie State Legal Services. I've been there about a year. I was hired basically to help with the surge in evictions that we anticipated due to the eviction moratoriums expiring. The last moratorium expired at the beginning of October. I then also came on to help co-chair this housing coalition that pre-existed me. So I was basically helping manage the eviction clinic at the courthouse for the past year, and now I'm transitioning into a new role in our Justice Equity and Opportunity Program. But that will also involve a lot of housing work. So I'm happy to be here, and again, thank you for accommodating me with Zoom today.
Yeah, and so what Erin and I want to talk with all of you about is this demonstration project concept that has arisen from the Housing Assistance Coalition. The Housing Assistance Coalition was formed in early 2020 as we were, as a community, grappling with the effects of the pandemic and the impact on local families falling behind in rent. As the different rental relief measures were released from federal and state levels, this group was convened to coordinate things at a local level, to share information, to help communicate from provider to provider about the resources that were available within the city and the town, and then also within the local nonprofit arena. We really wanted to coordinate the access to financial assistance to prevent people from being evicted when possible. In the process of working as this group, this coalition, you can see on the slide, it's a fairly large group of entities who are participating in this over the past couple of years. Several barriers were clearly identified towards housing stability that we've been working towards, and Erin is going to share a little bit more information about what some of those barriers are.
Thank you, Matt. And I think we can go to the next slide there. So part of what we found is that, you know, COVID really got the agencies working together and talking to each other in a way that hadn't really happened before. And that helped us identify issues that, some of them came about because of the pandemic, but some likely preexisted and were exacerbated by the pandemic. And now certainly new needs have arisen in addition with growth in our community, supply chain issues, inflation, all of these things kind of bubbling around together. So part of this is about meeting a need that has existed and responding to ongoing changes. One of the things I want to point out is, you know, eviction numbers have started to go down. I would say that they're not very low at this point, and in our community, they have existed at a significant level for a while. I believe there's 32 first appearances set on Wednesday this week, so that gives you a little bit of an idea of where we're at even in July of 2022. But even as the overall numbers have gone down, shelter numbers have gone up. And part of what this coalition has done has been tracking some of that data and information. And you can see with that interesting sort of correlation that even as those eviction numbers go down, shelter numbers are rising. There's a lot of other things going on here and other outside pressures. It's not just related to pandemic eviction. One of the things that we really identified is that a lot of the existing resources are especially coming from HUD, so some of the COC funds that come through PATH and other funds that come to other agencies in our community are meant to help folks who are unsheltered, are street homeless, or HUD calls it category one or four, so fleeing domestic violence or essentially experiencing street homelessness. And that doesn't address a huge portion of folks who are housing unstable and maybe are not yet street homeless. But certainly, we don't want to be in a position where we're telling people, you know, some of these resources are only available to you after the eviction already occurs. We want to help bridge those gaps for folks who we know are losing housing for various reasons. And it's not just eviction. You know, you've got folks who just can't afford where they're living anymore, who are on month-to-month leases, and landlords might refuse to re-rent to them. And they're allowed to make those business decisions, but folks are oftentimes then put in a real hardship when we have a tough housing market. So we're looking at a lot of complexity of situations. Families, individuals, you've got folks on fixed incomes, you know, folks who have lost work and maybe become recently re-employed but are still behind on rent and trying to figure out a way to catch those people up, to stay somewhere, or get them to the next place. So it's not always about just staying in the unit they're in, but maybe finding new housing. And all of these agencies working together, we all looked at each other and said, you know, there's really not somebody at any of our agencies who can really provide that extra step of helping people put out applications, you know, apply for funding for three different agencies that might have rental assistance funds but have somewhat complex applications that you've got to go through, or applying for a subsidy for housing, or applying for five different apartments because you might get denied for four of them. And so it's really, the idea of the Housing Navigator is to provide that extra help for folks navigating that system of, all of these folks working together, we have great resources in this community, but sometimes people do fall through the cracks because there's just so much to do when you're facing this level of instability. Matt, do you want to weigh in on some of the folks that maybe you've worked with and how you've seen some of this in your day-to-day life?
Yeah, sure. As Erin said, our shelter numbers are up at Home Sweet Home Ministries. That's true at Salvation Army as well. In fact, we are busier than at any time in the last three years that we've been as far as people presenting in need of shelter, the number of people residing in our shelter, and people that we're trying to support through our rapid rehousing programs as well. And so we really do see this crisis at this point in time and are fully strapped with trying to keep up with the demand that we see just presenting to us locally at Home Sweet Home Ministries. That brings proof to Erin's comments that we do not have the capacity as a specific organization, and if our experience is typical for the other organizations within our system, none of us have the capacity to coordinate and support people before we start serving them in our current structure. And so this Housing Stability Navigator fills that gap that exists in our current system to engage and prevent people, hopefully, from experiencing eviction, or if we can't prevent that eviction from occurring, prevent an episode of homelessness from occurring because we've been able to get involved and engage with them prior to them losing their home. And so we see on a daily basis, I actually asked my case management supervisor today for the latest data, and we see regularly people presenting to us who have been evicted, who, if they haven't been formally evicted, have been told that they are going to be, and they try and get ahead of it so they don't have that mark on their record. They have outstanding utility bills, they have some landlord issues that need to be mitigated. And quite frankly, the families that we serve, our community members that we serve, often get paralyzed because they don't know where to take that next step. They don't know where to go to get started in accessing some of the supports that really are, could be available, but they just can't navigate. My staff, my team, we are too busy to be able to get involved with them at that early stage. That would be the same for any of the nonprofits working in the homeless arena here locally as well. And so that's where we see this need for the Housing Navigator to really step in and help people as they, as they get kind of vapor locked, as they look at, oh, I don't know what to do, and maybe instead of taking a forward step, just decide to live in denial until that official notice comes. We want to prevent that from occurring through this Housing Stability Navigator.
Yeah, and we can go to the next slide. You know, part of this is about leveraging existing resources and looking at where those already exist. But just as an example, I think, you know, my experience speaking with the folks over at PATH on their rapid rehousing program is that that program has some funds available to help people get off the street into a new apartment, but because of the lack of availability of apartments right now, they're having trouble finding the apartment and the landlord who will accept that rapid rehousing payment. They can potentially fast-track folks if they can find their own apartment and a landlord who will rent to them, and then have PATH help pay some of those funds to get them back on their feet. But they don't have the staff and the capability to really do that in-depth relationship building with landlords and to help people, you know, find those apartments to then pay the money forward to be able to use those rapid rehousing funds. So our proposal, we are framing it as a demonstration project for three years. I think part of that is figuring out, you know, how much of this is from pandemic-related versus, you know, it being existing or exacerbated problems, and figuring out, is this an ongoing need? It's mainly for this salary, which, as far as we can tell from all of our coalition agencies, you know, there's not funding available currently for funding a salary for this particular position. And then the startup funds piece is just to give the navigator something else to work with after exhausting other resources. The idea is that this is not the first pot of money to go to, but sometimes, you know, bridging that gap is helping pay for storage, or helping with an application fee, or helping with a little bit of rental assistance, but that somebody couldn't access because they didn't meet the qualifications of other programs. And so it would help the navigator to have those funds to be able to help bridge those gaps after those other resources are exhausted. And the idea is the navigator knows about all the other resources. They're going, coming to the table, they're working with the coalition to make sure that this is not, you know, the first pot of money that they're going to. And I know we're getting a little bit down to time here. I think we had 10 minutes. I think we can go to our next slide.
And I'll go ahead and jump in at this point to follow up on what Erin was saying. We really see, as this coalition has really been working together for the past almost two and a half years now, there's a lot of commitment by the organizations that are part of the coalition. And so we think that housing, the Housing Stability Navigator within one of those representative organizations within the coalition automatically builds buy-in by the group because we already have been committed to meeting together to work to solve this. And with having a Housing Stability Navigator in place to coordinate this coalition, we really see as the next evolution, the next step of this group that formed early in the pandemic, and now we're seeing a very different type of set of circumstances with a lot of those emergency relief funds being exhausted, but the need still existing. The need for this is that no one of us organizations have the capacity right now to take this on. That's why we need to stand this up, to allocate the resources to make this happen. We need to try new things to tackle some of these problems that we've faced even pre-pandemic, but that were really highlighted and exacerbated by the pandemic. And so that's what we think housing this navigator position within one of the representative organizations is the way to go. And just for full transparency, that is not Home Sweet Home. I have not put Home Sweet Home Ministries forward as that entity. So this is not me coming for funding for my organization, but me saying, this is needed in our system. And that's why I'm passionate about this, because this will be a new endeavor in addressing some of these intractable issues that we see within our community.
Yeah, and we have had a couple of self-nominations from agencies to the Housing Coalition. I think that our plan is to come forward to you today and, you know, figure out where we're at in terms of being able to fund this program and then work with our agencies to figure out the best fit for who would house this position. I think we've got one slide left, and that's just sort of the tie-in to the American Rescue Plan Act funds and project, and the fact that this is really about health and public health as well. Because, you know, if you think about somebody who ends up becoming street homeless rather than having that gap covered, and the real disruption to so many areas of that person's mental health and physical health and well-being and family, you know, if you've got children in the family who are having impacts on school, and then the impacts on our agencies, systemic impacts of, you know, folks having to access additional resources at that point rather than being able to have that bridge with somebody who's able to help them navigate the system. So we really think that this is a key determinant of health, and it fits squarely within the priorities for the ARPA funding. We're happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Imig?
Thank you, and thank you so much, Matt and Erin, for making this presentation. Just to provide a little bit more of a context for how this has evolved, I want to stress that the proposal today is coming from the people who do the work. Like, it's not sort of, I listen and I think, this is great, please come to a council meeting. Thank you, Tim, for allowing that to occur. Thank you, Mayor. And what I want to stress is, first of all, that this kind of initiative is covered by ARPA. It's specifically for communities to build affordable housing, combat food insecurity, increase access to healthcare, and mitigate the consequences of unemployment, all of which are issues bound up with homelessness. And more importantly, designs of programs addressing homelessness are best informed by knowledge gained from the bottom up, from local agencies working on the ground who in turn are including people with lived experience of homelessness in their decision-making. So it certainly falls within that category, and the methodology is right. We need to be listening to those in the community who are engaged in this kind of work, and they have uniformly communicated that this could be incredibly helpful. I look forward to hearing what my peers have to ask about and comment on, because this is a great opportunity to learn more, to see, you know, what else we need to know before we can move forward. Oh, and one more thing. My initial proposal too, in conjunction with the Town of Normal, is to demonstrate that our communities can actually work together on something positive and not be engaged in working on a common goal but in our respective silos. So I think it's another great opportunity to demonstrate how community government can work together.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Councilmember Imig actually just touched on something in that last comment that maybe I didn't hear. Maybe you could clarify. Who else are you approaching for support for this financially, and why or why not?
We are also approaching the Town of Normal. We have a same presentation that we plan on providing to that council in the coming weeks. We really see this as a community-wide across the Twin Cities, that this is an issue that we can't draw a hard line between the two municipalities.
And so is the ask for the same amount or for half of what we, or is this the total amount?
We haven't gotten into those details on our end of the ask. We've put forward the total amount of the ask, but we haven't done the math on what proportion from each community.
That's helpful. I just want to say how interesting and heartening this proposal is. I haven't heard a whole lot yet, but what I have heard, I'm very supportive of. I especially like that it's proactive. Seems like too often, the tendency is to kind of address things from the back end after it's already a problem for people. And then it seems like too often, people are only willing to put Band-Aids on it. I would much rather keep people from being homeless in the first place.
Yes.
I mean, don't take this wrong, but I'd love it if you were out of a job.
I would find other things to do, believe me.
I'm sure you would.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler and then Crable?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott and Erin, thanks for coming, you know, to talk with us this evening. You know, housing sustainability is certainly important for our community. Just a couple of questions. It sounds like that, you know, that you're expecting to hire whoever would take this position is going to come internally. Is that correct? You said you had three self-nominations.
We have two of our participating entities who have self-nominated their agencies to house this program. That's right.
Could you say more then about, you know, the timeline and the process of moving forward? How that, you know, are there specific criteria you've set up already?
Erin, I think you're-
How will you, you know, make that decision?
Erin, I think you're probably best positioned to answer that.
Sure, thanks. So we have sort of a rubric to look at those self-nominations between those two agencies. We didn't want to step too much into that until we knew whether or not the position would be funded. Once that agency was determined by the coalition, then the agency would be responsible for doing the hiring. They, in their proposals, they've said, you know, we have the HR capacity and admin capacity, we have the actual physical space, you know, they have a certain number of things that they had to put forward to say why they're appropriate to take on this position, and then it would be up to them to do the hiring. And I think because they're active participants within the coalition, and this conversation has been going on for a while already, my guess is that hopefully that turnaround time would be fairly quick to be able to get someone hired and moving forward.
Great. And one more question. Certainly can't see the future, but, you know, this demonstration project is three years. How are you thinking about systemic sustainability beyond that three-year, you know, timeline? If this were to be, you know, some wonderful success, you know, then what? Or if it was perhaps turned out to be not what you anticipated at all, how might you, you know, respond to that situation?
Yeah, to answer you plainly, I see this as an opportunity to demonstrate how robust a public-private partnership can be between municipalities and the local nonprofit sector in really showing that when we try new things, we can have much more success than what we've done up to now. Within the nonprofit realm, there are additional funding opportunities once we demonstrate that a program or a new project has some efficacy to it. And so that would certainly be part of the future funding options for this type of program. Ideally, this would be the first step along the way to a more robust and intentional development of affordable housing and support for people in affordable housing, our lower-income neighbors in those arenas.
We have looked at other communities that have done this type of work. Sometimes they're housed at nonprofits, sometimes it's through municipality. I think that the person in this position would have a very big job right off the bat. You know, when we first talked about it, we said, well, can't we start with two or three people? But I think for, logistically, just getting it going, it would be easier to start with one, and then that person can look at outcomes, housing situations preserved, new housing obtained, you know, have a rubric for outcomes, and then potentially, you know, propose, do we need more of that same person? Do we need several people in a more, in a program that can help people moving forward based on outcomes?
Thank you.
Councilmember Crable?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Erin. And Erin, you've been, like you said, in the front lines with the eviction clinic, and I've been there with you a number of times where tenants really have no other option. And it seemed to evolve from where, you know, the landlords would accept rental assistance. And then I think when the market became tighter and there was an ability to raise rent, that landlord said, yes, I know I can get assistance, but I just want them out so I can raise the rent. And then you have to talk to him about, you know, can we get 30 days for them to move out? You know, what can we do to help this person not become homeless? And also with regard to helping for a person to find resources in that condition, right, of their being almost homeless. You know, I just remember going through MCLP in a poverty simulation, and I know you don't have to go through MCLP to do that. But, you know, we were put in positions as as people in in homes. So you lose your housing, and it was very difficult to find the right agency to get to to help you. And you had to go to like four or five to get the whole relief, you know, that you need. So I do see the need for this. And I just want to make clear there will be an organization, if this is approved by both Bloomington and Normal, there will be an organization that will kind of oversee it. But the person, the navigator, wouldn't necessarily be from those organizations. It could be anybody, right?
The navigator would be employed by one of one of the two organizations that have put themselves forward.
But yeah, but they they would hire that person.
That's correct. Okay.
Yes. Gotcha. And then what would you, what would success look like?
Success would look like fewer evictions. Success would look like lower numbers of homelessness in our community. Success would look like getting involved with a family during the most stressful time in their life to help provide stability for them, to help keep them ideally in that current home. And if not, help them find another home in the community and not have an episode where they have to come to Home Sweet Home or Salvation Army or somewhere else.
I think it also looks like, you know, mitigating the need for community members to move out of our community. That's certainly something that we've seen as well. People can't afford to stay here right now if you can't find another home that's available on a timeline, the timeline that you have if you're being evicted, or if your lease just ended on a month to month lease and you got a notice to move out. So I think that's a that's a part of it as well.
And yeah, and I'll just add at the end, you know, it really does sound like the navigator would be doing something that no one else is is doing, including PATH, including Home Sweet Home Ministries. And and this and the determination will also be, is this something that's temporary, right, COVID related? Or did we need a navigator in February of 2020? Right, potentially?
Yes. Well, we certainly did, but we still do need one.
Right, right, right.
In July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
So one I've worked with in different phases, many of the organizations on your list, and thank you to all of you, and thank you for your presentation. You guys do very good work and you do things that are very necessary. My question to you is, given the way that you have the organizations trying to do this, would it be better for that for a person in this capacity to not be part of any one of those organizations, but to be part of somewhere independent? Be it the Town of Normal, the Township of Normal, the Township of Bloomington, or the City of Bloomington?
It's an interesting question. I I don't think the answer is better either way. I think if it's within the Coalition, that brings some automatic buy in, as I referenced earlier, because that organization would be a known quantity to us. We're partners already. We we work together already. And so that would have some advantages that way, assuming we have positive working relationships with each other, right? I I suppose if it were a more independent or separate from the existing Coalition, that could bring that impartiality, could bring some some weight to it. But I really don't see it as a better either way. I think it's viable either way.
And I I guess maybe this this might be a question more for people up here, but between those four organizations, shouldn't we have the capacity to provide some of this help already?
I think the reality is our existing structures are maxed out. We are busy managing what already exists. And so perhaps it would be preferable if we had gotten to this point and had it built into our system already. But our system has developed over time to be what it is. And that's the reality of the the playing field that we have in front of us right now.
I apologize. That wasn't the question. I wasn't referring to you guys. I was saying, within community development in Bloomington, within the township of Bloomington, within we have staff that could be helping in this navigator role today, is there a way to utilize that staff rather than adding additional cost?
I I think that, you know, there there may be. Certainly, we have relationships with the townships and with the town and with the city. And those folks have, we we have representatives who've participated in this Coalition work as well and are part of this conversation already. But it doesn't seem, from what we can tell, that there is really a dedicated person. And I think having that dedicated person who has all of the the knowledge, is the info clearinghouse person, really. That's going to actually create, you know, a lot more. I'm trying to think of the word, but it it's going to be less resource intensive overall, right? To have one person that we know this is the person to go to when you can't figure out where to send your client who needs help filling out the application for the subsidy because there's nobody else to help them. And so I think that's that's what we've experienced so far is we're making great connections. But again, everybody's up to their limit of the work that they're able to do. And so having the single person, we think, would be helpful.
And I and I do think that there there could potentially be a challenge if it was housed in City of Bloomington Township or the Town of Normal Township because that might suggest that it's not an actual community wide initiative and community wide scope. Whereas I already said, it's not Home Sweet Home Ministries, but if it were to be an organization like Home Sweet Home Ministries, we do have that full community spectrum already as a service provider. And so I think there might be challenges if it were housed in one of the municipalities that wouldn't be if it was in one of the local nonprofits.
I think if we had one in each of the municipalities, maybe that that makes more sense. But in terms of it being, you know, a community wide issue, you know, when we're dealing with evictions, it's McLean County Circuit Court, right? It's the county. And with with Matt's work, they're certainly helping folks who are experiencing homelessness, who are coming from both the city and the town and from outlying areas.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Since somebody mentioned the county, has has, have you talked to them about being included? I know that the Fuse program through the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council goes out and looks for people that are homeless and tries to rehome on them. So has there been conversations there? And then I have another question. Do you actually have data that you're talking about, or is this anecdotal about maxed out and, you know, X number of people that are homeless?
Yeah, we would have continuum data. I'll I'll answer your second question first, and I'll, I think I'll let Erin answer the the question about the county. We certainly have continuum wide data on prevalence rates of homelessness. We all enter into a a common HMIS system. And then we would have local, I I track data on a quarterly basis just for Home Sweet Home Ministries. And so would assume my partner organizations do similar data tracking in in their places as well. And and like I said, my data tells us we're busier than we've been since 2019. And so there's all different ways to look at what that looks like from a data standpoint, but that is tracked for sure.
Okay.
And just to answer your your first question, the, you know, the county has been involved with these discussions as well. We've got the McLean County Regional Planning Commission has been one of our key partners as part of the Coalition, as well as some other county representatives have have joined our meetings. I think something like the the Fuse program, you know, is dealing with folks who who really are in dire straits on the street. And again, that's one population that certainly would be eligible to use these services. But there are, there is that complexity of situations and and folks who are experiencing housing instability who are doubled up, you know, there there are multiple family members living together who really, that's not the ideal situation, and they shouldn't have two families living under one roof. But that's a sort of a form of homelessness or living in a car or something like that that is a little less visible. And so we're trying to reach all of those folks across that spectrum.
Yeah, and and Fuse definitely provides an important service. But they serve only a small fraction of even who Home Sweet Home Ministry serves, and so.
The main question was, are you partnering with the county financially even?
Oh.
Okay. And I I read all the paper. I mean, I read every page that was submitted to us, and there's lots of duties listed here. What are the qualifications for this person? And how many hours per week are they expected to, you know, I'm just looking at that. And I guess you can.
Yeah, I can comment very quickly on that. Qualifications, this is obviously somebody who would be an experienced social work professional. And the reason we're calling it a demonstration project is because we fully expect there to be more need than one person can meet. But we want to demonstrate with this initial step that this can be an effective model rather than, as Erin said, you know, rather than hiring and asking for two to three staff positions right right out of the gate. We wanted to 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 show and and be judicious in use of resources, knowing that likely it's going to exceed our ability to serve everyone initially and and leave room for expansion down the road.
Okay, and you're talking about housing. The navigator, it's some location, then office supplies and all that type of stuff would.
That's all factored into the 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 proposed budget.
That's factored into that?
Yes.
Yes, the 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 salary amount is, both of the agencies that self nominated put the salary at around $45,000. So when you're looking at the that salary piece over three years, certainly the the amount is more than $45,000 per three years, but the additional amount on top accounts for all of the administrative costs, the health benefits, you know, all of that. So it is, it's meant to be a full time position with that, with this amount of money covering the salary and the benefits and everything for three years.
Okay. The last thing I have to say is this really is a short, an attempt to solve a problem short term. There's not enough housing. That is a problem, a serious problem, and not just for the underprivileged or those that had a negative effect from COVID. The people that are moving out of town, many of them, they can afford rent of $1,500 a month, okay? There is a state bill that came out. It's HB 2621 that is intended to solve the long term problem by putting out incentives specifically for affordable housing. I personally don't see how a navigator can help with the lack of housing. I'm just, I don't see how this proposal helps in that sense.
Yeah, and at Home Sweet Home Ministries, we would say preach it when you're talking like that. We, I absolutely agree with everything that you said. And and the intention of this Housing Stability Navigator is not to solve that long term issue. It's to solve the immediate crisis that we know is occurring right now with an eye towards, if we can get people stabilized, we can maybe take the next step as a community and start working towards building out that affordable housing.
And and part of the navigator's role would be creating more relationships. You know, I think one of the things I mentioned was creating relationships with landlords. There are existing incentives, right, for a landlord to participate in a rapid rehousing program, for instance, or to do a master lease with one of our agencies. Project Oz places some of their clientele into homes and helps pay for those homes while they're getting to their the the next step as young adults. So there are some incentives and ways to work with agencies and ways for the navigator to talk with the landlords and help keep building those bridges. You know, we're doing a pretty good job, I think, as agencies, talking to each other, but then it's also getting that information to the clients and really helping them understand what are you eligible for? Does this apartment have a set aside for senior housing in particular that maybe other people can't access, but you can because you would qualify? You know, there are a lot of those those things that I think this navigator could help with, with our existing stock that we have of housing.
Okay. Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, just a clarification. It seems like the the three year proposal sort of lends itself to the idea that you're trying to cover a gap. Perhaps there are longer term solutions that will emerge. But in the meantime, somebody's got to do something. Is that?
That's certainly our hope, yes, and intention, yes.
Thanks.
Councilmember Moni?
I just have two questions. It looked like on your coalition, there were a number of for profit businesses listed that participate with you. And I'm curious if you are approaching them also to raise funds for this proposal?
Erin?
So I'm just looking at our list of membership here. You know, we hadn't discussed. I think the easy answer is no, you know, we hadn't, we hadn't made an ask to any of those groups. We are primarily made up of nonprofit groups. And then it it's a loose coalition. That's that's how I'll put it in terms of our membership. So this represents, you know, representatives from each of these places joining on these monthly calls. It's it's a place to share information with each other, and so everybody sort of knows what's going on, where are the resources, trying to get people to the right place. But it's not a formal coalition with profit or nonprofit membership, if that makes sense.
There are some philanthropic, you know, departments, though, in some of these businesses. I just was curious if you were approaching them. So and then my second question, really, I guess, is for you, Erin. You talked about the complexity of the process, and one of the reasons this person would be needed is to help people navigate the complexity. So I'm interested in what actions you and your coalition partners are taking to simplify the processes.
Well, that that's really, you know, what the Coalition, what we've been trying to do in terms of talking to each other is try to all be on the same page so we know what resources do currently exist. So that when I do have a client on the phone who's a housing legal legal aid client, I'm not just trying to address their legal problem. I'm trying to also then get them what we call a warm handoff to another partner agency to try to get them some additional help. But for me, that warm handoff right now might look like referring them to LifeSill and MCCA to do some applications to get some assistance. And then the folks there, you know, have certain restrictions around what they, who they're able to serve or not. And they give them the application, and they've got a huge line of people waiting for applications, so they can't sit there necessarily and work through the entire application with them or the other three applications from three other agencies that we refer them to. So we're trying to simplify it by talking to each other, having this this focused person who can have all of those names on the list and really have the clearinghouse of information so we can make one call instead of six calls is really going to to further help simplify things.
So just a thought, you know, creating an intentional process architecture across all of these organizations and their respective processes, whether you have this position or not, I think would be very helpful. Because without it, this person will still be driving a fire truck, it sounds like, because there's a lot of, I guess, complexity and differentiation in your processes that could be addressed in a project type fashion.
And there is some groundwork for that. Matt might be able to speak to it more in terms of there early in with some of the COVID dollars specifically. There was one application for a few agencies that was a little more succinct in being able to just do that one piece. I think as we've seen some of those dollars running out from different sources, we've started to see it become more fractured just because of the nature of where we're at and and some of those monies going away. And Matt, do you have any comment about that?
Yeah, I absolutely, we, you know, there's been a lot of, there was certainly a lot of early work by the Coalition on sharing information publicly with the community to get it out there. We developed uniform marketing materials, so to speak, to provide people direction towards the the different funding opportunities that existed. Erin referenced a a common application where we could develop that. That can get challenging based off of funding requirements and and expectations of of different funding sources with what, how easily we can combine those processes. But certainly, that is the spirit of this coalition.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking, you know, kind of playing on on the whole project and and trying to get the word out more. I just did a quick Google search, Bloomington, Illinois Housing Assistance. Because that's the type of thing that somebody, you know, hey, well, I need help. What can I do? And first two that come up happen to be Bloomington Housing Authority and Housing Authority of the City. But and then so Housing Assistance City of Bloomington. Is there a specific website out there as a clearinghouse already that an individual could go to? Is there a specific website out there as a clearinghouse already that an individual could go to? It could be housed by any of your partners, they just, you know, get a good, get a good domain name that, that's, you know, kind of talks about what it is, get a good domain name, and some type of clearinghouse webpage already that, that something like this position could end up, you know, working into and using the same page, but it has all the information well laid out. Don't put a lot of words, people don't read words, but just, you know, short, sweet, to the point, if you need this, go here, here, and, and continued, all in one place for people.
There's something sort of like that, but it's, it's a spreadsheet that the agencies all share that's not publicly available, and part of the reason for that is that things are changing all the time. Some of the, some of the funds sometimes run out, or some of the requirements change, and so we want to be able to keep that updated amongst ourselves and then be able to share the information directly with our clients once we've been able to identify a client need. But I do think that something like that could be a project of this navigator, and I will just tell you that I don't think, you know, any of our agencies currently have the capacity to do the maintenance that would be required to make sure the public, public is getting accurate, complete information all the time if it were to be a public resource.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowland?
Yeah, I just have one more comment to make. Allocation of federal funds, whether it's the COVID, or ARPA, or any kind of federal funds, have strict documentation requirements, and administration of the ARPA funds would be the same. So I have a real concern with just handing out the money and not having documentation that the city can report to. If, if the resources, the financial resources from the federal government are not accounted for or are not spent the way they're supposed to be, the federal government will come back and ask for the money back, and they will fine the city. So I, I have a real concern with kind of giving money out where there's no accountability. And that's where my major concern, I think the idea is great, I look, you know, it's a gap, you're filling a gap, but I really struggle with not being accountable.
Yeah, and certainly, I think there, as we develop the program, there are reporting parameters that can be established to, to, to feed that accountability. And I can tell you, those concerns are very much the day-to-day concerns of a nonprofit organization. That is part and parcel for any grant funding that flows to us, and so we are experienced in making sure that we use funds wisely, we report back accurately about their expenditures, because nobody wants to have to pay that money back.
And that's part of the benefit of having the position housed in one of the agencies who is already doing this work, is that they would be the employer, and so they would have some, that, that's accountability there, but then they're also accountable to, you know, the coalition that they're a part of in terms of, you know, this idea having come out of those, these community discussions. And we all are interested in there being outcomes and outputs so that we see, you know, what really is happening, why it is a demonstration project. You know, the goal is that we have something at the end to show for it, whether there's a continued need or not.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yep, I was just going to add that, is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine, my head was turned that way, so I saw what you do.
Is that okay? That there, there are models that the H U D has put out to Housing and Urban Development about how municipalities and cities have used ARPA funds in this way and have been able to create models of accountability. With my nonprofit hat on, I, I agree completely that you are tasked to be incredibly accountable to your funders. And, and what I like about positioning this as a proof of concept is that it gives us an opportunity to demonstrate with accountability and data that it is providing some form of relief that can then be jettisoned into public-private partnerships, can be used to procure more grant funding, can be used to engage in more philanthropic, philanthropic requests, because you're creating the demonstration of how this can be, can work to resolve the issue. And I think it's, I think that HB twenty six twenty one is really exciting, and I hope that a lot of, a lot of good things can come out of it in terms of incentives. I, I see that, I don't see this as mutually exclusive, I think it's a parallel process. That, of course, we need more affordable housing, but we also need to do what we can with those who are, you know, experiencing housing instability and frankly are currently, you know, somewhat on fire or about to be.
Councilmember Crable?
I'll be brief, Mayor. Just to Donna's point, yeah, I agree, you know, we're going to have to determine if there's enough accountability here, right? But, you know, I would compare it, so we've given quite a bit of our money to infrastructure, right? And then we've also given it to the Mobile Health Unit, which is a private entity that will have to get, you know, accountability there, so I don't see any difference in this, we just, they just have to make sure to do it, but I don't see any difference in those two projects of the accountability that we would need to support it. Just as an analogy.
No tips for that?
Just to, you know, just to respond to that, the bus is a physical object that you can actually see, and, you know, patients going in and out and all that, whereas, you know, a navigator is, is yes, a physical object, a person. However, the work that they do is not necessarily visible, I guess.
Briefly, I think, you know, they would have a caseload and they would, they would be tracking, were we able to keep this person housed? Was this person able to get into new housing before becoming homeless? Did they become homeless and then they were able to get into new housing quickly? So I think that there would be metrics for that. It might look a little different than my system, but certainly we track that sort of information in our program for our legal cases. And I think that there would be ways of keeping track of it, because we certainly would want to see at the end of the project, you know, that, that there had been those outcomes.
Councilmember Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you both for doing this presentation and bringing some explanation behind the reading material that I received. What I haven't heard a whole lot of talk about is landlords. I am personally familiar with landlords who have empty properties throughout both the city of Bloomington and the town of Normal, so I'm not being exclusive to one or the other. And these landlords are unable to rent their properties because of the hardship that was put upon them by the rent moratorium and the water bill moratorium. So the properties remain empty because they have no assistance. I've not heard any mention from your proposal of assisting the landlords to create vacant properties to be rentable again.
That might be, you know, something that the navigator is able to speak with those landlords in particular and talk about incentives, like I mentioned with the rapid rehousing programs or other programs for coordinated partnership with agencies and with tenants. I think the goal of this coalition has always been to have those relationships, and we're really looking at trying to meet basic needs. Certainly, you know, I, I have empathy for landlords who have had financial hardship because of those issues. I think it, when you're looking at a tenant who is facing imminent homelessness, that's the sort of level that we're looking at this position, I think, trying to immediately serve in terms of clientele. But I don't, I think that the navigator would certainly be trying to build those partnerships and, and make sure that our housing stock is being used appropriately. That would be part of it as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Right now, I'm going to be honest with you both, that I don't feel like I have enough data or information to be able to make a decision on something like this. So I would suggest that you bring some more information to the table, and that way we can kind of get a better idea of what we're actually investing in if the council decided to do such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's, it's an interesting point that Councilmember Urban brings up. First of all, I, I want to say that I, I'm glad you raised, you know, you brought this issue forward for us to, to consider. And I, and that you're also proposing a solution, you know, so I, I think that, that's a good thing. You know, ultimately, you know, as we continue to, to discuss, you know, we'll, we'll hopefully come to a solution that, that is acceptable for, for all. I, I do agree that there is, we probably would need a little bit more information. For example, you know, maybe communities that you've benchmarked that do this kind of program, you know, I think that would be helpful to kind of give us an idea where it has worked, where it hasn't, and if it's communities that are similar to ours, I think that, that'd be helpful. And I, you know, one of the reasons why I, I, I'm happy that you brought this forward is that because I, I do know, I agree with Councilmember Bowland, I think nobody here will disagree that there is a, you know, we have an issue with housing, but yet that issue is not going to be solved right away. It's going to take a little bit of time to, to, to build stuff, so in the meantime, I think we do need to do something, but we just need to figure out what the, the right thing to, to do is. And, and another thing that I would, I would add is, is maybe providing some, some, maybe like a tangible case studies, you know, where we can see where actually the complexity lies. Because some, you know, for some of us, you know, those are just words. And I think people might have a tendency to oversimplify, you know, what you're talking about, you know, it's not just about filling out forms, but there's, there's actually some real complexities to, to those things. So I think it'd be helpful, you know, for people to actually walk through what a, a particular situation is, and also having numbers about, you know, the, the kinds of things that you're, you're seeing, the numbers of people that you're, you're seeing. What are we talking about? We talked about ten people, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty? I think that, that would be helpful, it gives people some, some context and, you know, depth, so. That's, I think we'll end it there, but thank you very much for your presentation, this was very helpful.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is 5B, Presentation, Discussion, and Potential Direction Related to Redistricting Map Options Proposed by Staff and Residents as requested by the City Clerk Department and the Administration Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My comments are going to be very brief before I turn this over to City Clerk Leslie Yocum and Corporation Counsel to walk us through this presentation. When we get to the end of this, if it be counsel's desire, and there is a recommended single map, we would be prepared to bring this back in front of council for a vote as early as next Monday. Leslie?
Thank you. So by now, we have seen the maps for quite a while. We have had redistricting items to resolutions, and then last week, the maps brought forward, so it's appeared on three different agendas starting back in March. The maps that were presented last week, there are four staff-proposed maps, and we're going to walk through those. And then also celebrating again, one of our residents, Matthew Los, also presented a fifth map to us and did a remarkable job with that. So if we can go to the next slide, please? So I'll start by just talking a little bit about what is required of redistricting and why we do that. So we went through the census in 2020, and our city's population grew, which is wonderful. That said, the Constitution requires that our ward maps, as close as we can, push forward and represent the population as evenly as possible. So with that, our city grew to seventy eight thousand, six hundred and eighty with the last population, and our ward maps across all nine, a goal population is eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. So there's three things that the Constitution requires for a perfect map. The first is compactness, the second is contiguousness, and the third is the equal on the population deviation. So in terms of contiguousness, that one's pretty easy for us. That really just means that they all align and touch, and because the way our, our precincts that make up the wards are laid out, it's really not a factor that we'll go through today because they're all contiguous naturally. In terms of compaction, compaction is we're really trying to avoid drawn-out or purposely pulled-together precincts. And that gets a little tricky for us, but is less of a concern, because some of our precincts are just naturally in that shape. So if we look at, on this particular map, Ward Eight, which is the purple, that area to the east, which is where the Grove is located, that's just the shape of that precinct, so we really can't avoid that. So the big factor that we look for here is substantially equal in population, and the goal for the statute is no more than ten percent of a deviation. So with this one, this is the first map, we call it Plan One, or the Minimal Moves Map. The Minimal Moves Map is exactly what that sounds like. What we tried to do here, and we utilized an Esri GIS software to do so, we basically move around fifty-two precincts, or cookies, as Troy Olson and P W would call them, to come up with combinations that would come together for nine wards and meet this, this, the factors that we just talked about. So in this one, we really tried to make the least amount of changes to meet their standard requirements. One of the things that came out of the census is that Ward Seven and Ward Eight are the two that really kind of threw us off, so it's great, it's growth, but they're the ones we're moving around to factor into these three things. So Ward Seven came out with having seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven people, so it has eleven point seven nine percent deviation, which is under the eighty-seven, forty-two, and then Ward Eight has a whopping ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three, so that puts that deviation at almost twenty-six percent. So in the map that you see here, what we did is we made the least amount of moves that we could, and then you'll see that the main buckle of downtown, which is the yellow and pink area there, that it, it remains the same as we have in our current ward map. Taken amongst the four staff-proposed maps, this one ranked fourth for compaction and population deviation. Next slide, please. Plan Two, this is actually Plan Two, Three, and Four are a little bit of what I would say a cleanup. So I'd like to point out a couple of things that we tried to do to try and improve the way, the way that the wards are laid out. So you'll see here that, let's see, if we look at the light yellow and the light blue, those are wards four and five, and then continuing down south, the orange, Ward One, and purple, Ward Eight. We tried to utilize Veterans Parkway as a means of cleanup, so we thought this might be a nice way to have residents in the community be able to look at, or be out and about, I guess, and understand who might fall into which wards. So Veterans Parkway has used that, and you'll see that pushed across a few of the maps. The other thing that we did is we brought the downtown area into a single representation by a single council member. And so the idea behind this is we thought that by bringing them together, it might unify the area, allow a single council member to be able to receive, you know, the good, the bad, the great, whatever you want to call it, and be able to report back to the council in that manner. So you'll see there, that's represented by the light-colored pink. Next, what we did is we looked, if you look in the Next, what we did is we looked, if you look in the bottom-left corner, the green and the orange, that's wards one and wards two. Here, there's basically two different ways that you can lay out that downtown area and still accomplish some of the other goals that I talked about, or the cleanup ones, not necessarily the statutory ones. So this is what we call our horizontal layout here. You'll see, if we go to the next slide with Plan Three, that the green and the orange wards one and two switch to more of a vertical layout there. So one of the things that you might be thinking about, or maybe it's just me because I've been doing this, digging in these numbers for so long, is compaction. So one of the things with compaction, and I said we weren't going to address it too much, but I do want to point out, is that the standard test that is primarily used in the state of Illinois is just an eye test. So when you're thinking about compaction, and you look at it and you go, wow, does this look like it's purposely drawn out? Or does this look more compact just from the visual test? So if we can go back, Phil, to Plan Three and see that the horizontal layout, I originally said to Troy and P W, this has to be, you know, this has to be the least compact way to do it when we're looking at vertical and horizontal. And in fact, the data actually is just one point off. So it's actually less than a point difference in a compaction standpoint if we switch between the vertical layout that was in Plan Three and the layout of Plan Two. So to finish up with, we can stay on Plan Two. Sorry, Phil, I just was trying to get that bottom corner. For Plan Two, another thing that we tried to do was think about future growth, and to also think about things like neighborhoods that might be divided. So, you know, you're in your neighborhood, and the guy across the street is represented by somebody else, but you also have, you know, common, you know, celebrations or ailments, whatever you'd like to call them, similar to what I was saying with downtown. And so the upper right-hand corner where we're looking at light blue, Five, and red, Nine, and light green, Three. And there, what we did is we took some large neighborhoods, particularly Hawthorne was split between two wards there. And, you know, these often, these large neighborhoods, they're operating under, you know, a single neighborhood association. And so it, we thought, okay, if we can try to pull some of these together, it might unify them. And so here, Ward Three is now in a single ward, whereas today, under our map, it's it's a split ward in terms of that neighborhood. We did that across all of our wards and precincts, too. So I'm just calling these out as examples, but just want to to be mindful that we looked at all of these the same. Another thing I I should have said in the beginning, too, is the hashed precincts that you see there, those are actually the ones that a current council member lives in. And by city code, they have to live in the ward that they represent. And so with this, it may did make it a little bit trickier, I would say, to do to be able to lay it out. But those are the ones that are represented by a current council member. And then the plan will be, once you do approve a new map, the new ward maps will not be, they won't go into effect until May first after the election, which is in coming up this coming April. But what it will do is it will allow those who are interested in seeking counsel, or those that are going to seek reappointment, to be able to canvas the appropriate areas that they know that they'll represent in the future. All right. So the last thing to point out on Plan Two, I referenced a little bit in terms of future growth. So if we look at the light green Ward Three, this represents eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six in terms of the population of that ward. Whereas if we, and we'll get to it in just a little bit, when we go to Plan Four, Plan Three and Four, actually, if we want to go to Plan Two, we could, Phil, please. That changes, actually, Ward Three there, and Ward Three jumps to nine thousand one hundred and two. And so again, this is just an example of taking into account future growth. Do we want to start from the beginning and having, you know, wards that have more than the eight thousand seven hundred and forty-two, which is our goal? Or if we have the chance, and there are some that are over, so in in some of these plans, too, so it's not, you know, ideal across the board. But when we look at it, and we do have the opportunity to begin now under the goal, we're hoping that, you know, in ten years, when we come back and do our census, that we're back at this table. I don't know that I want to be in charge of the project, Jeff, teasing him. He's the one who gave it to me in the beginning. But no, I I mean, we want to be mindful of wanting future growth, but at the same time, trying to be mindful of it now, where we're not going to start out with them over if we don't have to. So with Plan Three, we just covered that top corner. So it does push the Ward the Ward Three to nine thousand one hundred and two. And then, as we talked in the bottom-left, we go to that vertical layout there. The downtown area is one buckle, represented by Ward Six, as you see. And we also kept the Veterans Parkway line in terms of division kind of there in the middle as well. Ranked amongst all of the plans, I didn't say it early earlier, but Plan Two is first for compaction and population deviation. And when we get to Ward Three, this is actually ranked third for compaction and population deviation. And we'll go to the last staff one and then hit the resident. All right, so this one is Plan Four. Plan Four ranked second amongst compaction and population deviation. It has that same upper right-hand corner that pushes Ward Three to nine thousand one hundred and two. It has the Veterans Parkway line for cleanup. It also has that bringing the downtown under a single. But what it does differently than Three is it goes back to that horizontal layout for wards one and two. So a little combination, I guess, all of them across the board. As a recap, just for these ones before we move on, is that Plan Two would be ranked first for for population deviation and compaction. Plan Four, that you have in front of you, would be ranked second. Plan Three would be ranked third, and then Plan One, or Minimal Moves, is ranked first. That said, I want to point out that there's not a bad plan here, and I truly mean that. It's, you know, I got to dig into the numbers, then dig into the case law and the requirements, but really Troy Olson in Public Porcs, our GIS guy, if you will, did all the magic to make this happen. And we are super proud to say that amongst the four plans, not one of them has a population, a mean population deviation of more than four percent. And so with the statutory requirement being ten percent, four percent is pretty impressive. That said, we did receive one submitted plan by a resident. If we can go, actually, two slides, I think it'll be, there'll be a title slide that comes first. Yep. So this one, Public Plan One, is what we call it. I did not receive, you know, notes or factors or things like that to be pointed out by Matthew that submitted it. But I will tell you that he submitted it to us in an Excel document. And I can't imagine the time that he has put into it. So I really want to stress how impressive it is that he he got to this point. It meets all of the qualifications of the statute. Its mean deviation is six point six seven percent, so still well underneath the the ten percent. It's, it is, it is different in, you know, from what we presented. But, I mean, he uses, he utilizes veterans a little bit in the middle there to do some cleanup. Downtown stays with multiple ward representations. And across the board, like I said, even for compaction, everything was in line for what it needs to be, and contiguous isn't a factor. So big props to him. And at this point, I don't know if, Jeff, if you had anything more you want to add. Doesn't look like it. Means I'm, he didn't kick me from over here, so we did okay. But happy to take your questions. The the last thing that I would say is that racial disparity is also a factor to, that we considered. It's not a statutory required factor in the sense of the three big that I mentioned, the compactness, the contiguousness, or the population deviation. But once the maps pass those three tests, then you can look at the racial disparities. And there, really, what we're trying to look at is just to make sure that we're not diluting the minority vote. And so I would say, you know, we teased that when we first got this project, and I'd, you know, be wrong to not mention Jeff and Billy and sing their praises, too, because we've all been at the table doing this. But we thought we'd come out with a hundred plans, you know, and how, and then we're going to get all these resident plans, how are we ever going to get here, you know, that kind of thing. And the reality is, is that when you actually consider where each of the council members live, those precincts being locked, that really knocks out a number of plans. I would say we probably got down to ten or fifteen, something like that. And at that point, we did pull ones that if there was a red flag from a racial disparity standpoint, it went. You know, we knew that the software that we were using could only turn out certain, it could turn out a lot of maps, but we wouldn't actually pull maps together if they didn't meet the three statutory requirements. And so that got us down pretty low. But all of the maps that you have before you, I truly would be comfortable in saying that they're they're good plans. And even on the racial disparity side, there was, they don't have a yellow flag or or anything like that. And I'll just say that I think it's one of the projects that, while I teased saying it was a lot, that I've enjoyed because I really have gotten to learn about. Now, I knew we have a diverse community. What I didn't know is where everybody lives. And I know that sounds even kind of creepy to say, I don't know where you live. But I am proud to say that our community, as diverse as it is, is spread throughout. And I I think a lot of people might assume differently. And so just proud to be a part of the project and happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk, for for the presentation and for the supplemental materials and all of the the work you've put into this. It's been a learning process for me, too, and and very, an interesting one. One, can I just ask a point of clarification before a couple of other substantive comments? With Map Five, did you say that the deviation was six-point-something or other? Because I thought that the document that you shared with us, that the proposed redistricting, Public Plan One, Population Summary, said three point six-six? For the mean percent deviation?
Yeah, so the mean, the mean ward deviation for Public Plan One is six point six-six percent.
I
Let's see, and I can pull up what I sent you also, give me two seconds. I've got a kind of a summary plan in front of me.
Says mean percent deviation, three point six-six.
Let's see. And actually, you are correct. I apologize. That's a big difference, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, you're exactly right. I wrote down six point six-six, but it is three point six-six. So we can actually make that same statement across the board for all of them. I apologize. Thank you.
Within four percent.
Let four percent or less. Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good catch. Just didn't want to be looking at the wrong thing. So just a, just a couple of questions about the whole race question. Can you just tell me what the goal was for looking at racial disparities? Were you trying to ensure that that each ward had roughly the same mix? Or or were you trying to ensure that that each war, I don't, I don't know. Can you just explain that to me?
Yeah, I can. So I think it's important to also mention the process that we chose in this. Jeff, and I don't want to speak to his work before I got handed it, but did a lot of research what other cities have done, right? And, you know, there's others that have held, you know, more public hearings or hands-on kind of workout plans together and whatnot. And the process that we wanted was to be focused on data, right? So having a data-filled project allows us to come in, and and I mean that on the racial disparity side, on all of all of the factors of the statute as well. So that it's data-driven, it's removing bias, opinions, whatever you want to call it, from the, you know, the process in general. And so what we would do is, once we'd satisfied the three overall factors, and we were diving in, what we would do is we would look at it in, at the data that's there, and the census provides all of that data, I should have said earlier, from on a precinct level. And so what you're looking at trying to do is not dilute the minority vote, right? And so we are a majority-white community. And so by that, we want to make sure that, for example, I remember a plan that that got thrown out very early on, and it was going to dilute a Hispanic vote. We were going to, in the shape of the ward, the way that we had pulled it together, we were going to lose, let's say, I'm making these numbers up, but let's say, three hundred Hispanic votes, and we were going to gain two hundred white votes. So what does that do? That tips the scale even further. And so the goal is to not dilute the minority vote anymore. But we also don't want to get into a way of, you know, gerrymandering, or, you know, where you're pushing all of your minority votes into one into one area from a voting perspective. So you're basically trying to just make sure that, yes, there is a majority, but that the minority still has an opportunity to have power and you know, make an impact in the voting area. Anything, Jeff, you would add to that?
Thank you. Yes, I I I seem to describe this way as well. Similar to how you would not consider race in like a job application, or, you know, in that type of situation. You generally don't consider race also when you're drawing maps, right? You want it to be fairly drawn and and equal or whatnot. So that's why the clerk talked about how, you know, that was not a factor. You look at those other compaction, equal population, those type types of things. But on the back end, you also don't want to, if you had a a a ward or a district that is what would be considered like a minority-majority-type district, you don't want to have broken that up, so to speak. Now, we did not have anything like that. So there was, you know, that we would not be violating that principle, so to speak. But generally, you don't consider, you know, you don't want to dilute the minority vote. You also don't want to do anything to, if you've got a district that is made up primarily of minorities, you don't want to unintentionally break that up either. So that's a long way of saying, basically, when you're drawing these up, you're not really considering race. But you also want to make sure at the back end that you haven't done anything to impact that negatively. Which I know does not seem to make a lot of sense, but these are the voting laws that we are given.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're saying we don't want to do anything to consider race, but we don't want to not do anything to consider race.
Well, it's it's that we, so there, think of it this way, if 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 you've got a district that is primarily Hispanic, and we drew these war, you know, we drew these wards, and we saw that one ward is completely made up of of Hispanic individuals, that that's the majority there. We would likely be violating the law if we took that and diluted it, right? So that would be not something we would want to do. Does that make sense?
Fortunately, if I, to go back to it, like I said earlier, fortunately, our diversity is pretty widespread. And so I think it was around, like, a thirty percent minority is kind of a norm across all wards when you're looking at all the different maps. And so, you know, like, we've, it's a very difficult thing, I know, to try to portray. But we did see in numbers in certain instances where a delusion would have been material, and those were not considered.
And we can also get some more information to the council on that specific component, if that's, would be helpful.
Well, so I guess the one other piece of information that would be helpful to me, and then I'll I'll stop, is do any of the maps that have been is, do any of the maps that have been proposed, either by the city staff or by the public, not meet those goals in terms of racial disparities? Is there any rank, okay, so of course they all meet those goals. But is there any ranking within them in terms of one is even better than another one? And if so, what is that ranking and what's it based on?
Yeah, so we had talked, Councilmember Ward and I had about this. And so I was diving into numbers all day, if I, if I will, to try and see, how can you rank them? You know, like you had asked, I, the, you rank them by population deviation, you rank them, you know, by popu, by compactness, et cetera. Why can't you rank them by race? And the problem is, is that when you, when you get into it, different ward layouts have different impacts. But then it might be that this particular, because we had, I think, I think there's six races that were primary. And then we even had an additional section that was other. And then we had an additional section that was two or more of minorities, right? And so to get into the weeds and say that this minority one is, you know, more important than this other one is where I had the challenge. And I went and looked at lots of different other ways to calculate it and whatnot. And the best thing that I came up with today, and again, if you guys can come up with something or there's another way, we would be more than happy to run numbers in a different manner, was to take, and I added up all of the minorities across like the particular ward and then divided it by the population total. So I would understand, like I mentioned earlier, okay, this particular ward layout is 32% minority in this ward. And this one is 29%. And then across that map, then I did a mean deviation. And it's kind of an interesting, and that's where I got the 30%, because it would come to 30%, you know, 30.556, 30.67. You know, which makes sense because I can't change the makeup of our community. It is what it is. But that was the closest thing that I could get to a quick answer to the ranking in that sense.
So you're saying they're all within about a percentage point of each other?
From the, from the mean of the minority vote, they were all within 1%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Crumpley?
So first of all, you, you've answered a lot of my questions after the, the maps have been provided, Leslie. Yeoman's work, you, and then a lot on Troy, right? He had the GIS stuff and Jeff as well. And so just amazing. But there's a lot to look at and a lot of things to, to consider. And it almost seems almost as complicated or maybe more complicated than the budget. And so it's hard to get public input, right? You know, what does the public even know what to look at? I mean, we've been given all this and I'm not 100% sure of everything, you know, to, to look at. So a little bit concerned about the lack of public input, but maybe that's just kind of natural with, with this, right? And I understand, you know, the goal of relying on data, right? And then, you know, I also think it would be a nice goal to have more diverse older people, people that don't look like me. We've done a good job with mayor. But, you know, when we look at the council members and, 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 you know, we still need to do some improvement on that. And I don't know if that's something that we can, you know, address when we look at the maps. And, and Jeff, in looking at the document you shared with me and the Illinois Voting Rights Act, even when you don't have a minority-majority, they also want you to look at creating crossover districts, coalition districts, influence districts, right? So where maybe a minority doesn't, doesn't reach the 50%, right? But they're a high enough number where they can get crossover from non-minorities or other minorities, things like that. And, and I, I know that that's something that you considered. But I don't know if, for instance, we could look at, you know, i- if we created a map that had as close as we could get to a minority-majority district. And would that even fit with the other criteria that we have? And, and you may have already, that may be part of the hundred you looked at, right?
Yeah, so I'll take your first, the first thing you said first about the public input. And so I will say, you know, did we have a public hearing? No. But we were on, you know, in three different council agendas. And we originally, the original resolution that was passed back in March, when we got into putting together maps and we realized how, you know, it's not an easy process. We talked with Jeff and Billy and that's when it was decided to give the public even more time. And so that's when the, the other resolution came out and the, the time was extended for submission of plans. And then we bolstered and worked along with Catherine, the Communications and External Affairs Manager, also on making sure that the information that we were putting out was clear. And then I answered questions. I didn't get a lot of questions, I will say. But for instance, like with Matthew, when he was putting together that plan, you know, if he had any questions, then I would answer them. And, you know, not providing legal advice or anything like that, but just answering the general questions of what do we need to do? What is this? How is that? And so we're pretty happy with how that went. I think that, of course, there, as I mentioned, other cities did it other ways. But really wanting to, you know, put it out there, if somebody had questions or wanted assistance in the process, to make ourselves available to them on a one-on-one basis, which I think is even better than having a, you know, a big meeting where we, you know, have lots of groups working together. In terms of a majority, you know, driven plan, there were, I can't even, I can't recall one particular map that we looked at that created a majority. Like I mentioned earlier, there were ones that created some red flags in, in terms of the opposite direction, but not one in particular that I recall that we looked at that had created a majority. And then in terms of crossover and coalition districts, you, that to me actually, and I'm, I've written them down because I want to look into it a little bit more. But one of the things that I think is kind of nice in like what we did with pulling together the downtown into one particular ward six, and, you know, it's represented in, I think, three of the five maps, was we did actually see an improvement in, in the minority vote across, you know, a maj- a majority of the minority races when pulling together those and not having it represented by multiple. So I will say there, there was an improvement and I think it was like 7.25 to 11.25 or something like that. So not huge, but an improvement.
Sure.
And I would just add, I need to do a little more research, but I think the Illinois Voting Rights Act is specifically, it talks about the legislative, the state legislature redistricting. Yes, so I, that's where they talk about the crossover and some of those other districts.
Yeah, I think, yeah, putting together, you know, Ward Six, making it more compact is a good option. Of course, I don't know if, if, say, if downtown business owners, for instance, might want three versus one. But yeah, I think there's advantages either way on that. And so, yeah, that's, that's all I had, really, just some general questions like that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leslie, first of all, fantastic job. And, and, and really, when you get into the fantastic job of it, when you start talking about this, I see excitement in, in you on this. And, and it seems like you, you just really get excited about this and the work that you've done. And that's just, it's outstanding to see from somebody that they really seem to enjoy their work and really enjoy a project that they're working on and are, are excited to see it come to fruition. And, and so just very nice job. That's just a lot of work and to get excited about numbers.
And maps.
Yeah, numbers and maps.
It's about the people.
Yeah. So my, my question, and this kind of goes to city manager and you and everything, in looking at these maps, that's something you touched on of future growth. Do we anticipate, I would say, in the next year, two years, five years, the city looking to annex additional land and additional neighborhoods and stuff like that?
Yeah, definitely. And one of the biggest annexation, I guess, plans that we have currently is executing pre-existing utility agreements. So those are in play currently. But then as we look at other parts of the community, we, we definitely see areas of growth where our new infrastructure needs would likely be requested by a developer.
Okay. And with that knowledge, looking at the, the existing that we have, how has that been taken into the maps? Were you able to even look at that and bring that into the maps any for these plans?
Yeah, so one of the, I guess, blessings of it all is that Troy is in Public Works and is our GIS guy across the board and all the things that we do. Hope there's not a number two. I think he's training a guy that is, is pretty great, but not wanting to make light of all that he handles. But, so he, he looked at a lot of those. I, I'm not going to say that, you know, he went in and looked at all of the potential annexation agreements, but everything that he was aware of and then also in running it past his peers, we were mindful of those. The other thing is that I think is great and, and Councilmember Ward helped me with this is all of these plans are at 4% or, 4% or less, right? And so even if it was the 6% that I said, now I have to apologize to Matthew, that still allows for growth, right? Like with the statute requiring that we be no more than 10%, we still are well under where we need to be. So we'll be able to account for that. Now, I, I do hope that, you know, somebody is back at the table doing this in 10 years and we've had way more growth than the 10%, you know, something like the 25% that Ward Eight has experienced. But yes, that's kind of a long answer to your question, but those, they were mindful of those. I'm not sure if it's all of them, but we are well positioned for it no matter what.
Okay. The last thing I have, and you've mentioned him's first name a couple of times, who, Matthew.
Loss.
What was his last name?
Matthew Loss.
Matthew Loss, L-O-S-S?
You got it.
All right. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Thanks. Hopefully, he's not mad at me for saying his name 20 times, but he gets the publicity. He's did a great job.
Okay. Councilmember Crumpley?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to add my thanks, you know, the chorus of thanks, you know, to you and Billy and Troy for doing all this careful work. It was just great to look at these maps. Having never done that before, you know, it was really, it was really educational for me to sort of see how the city's laid out. And I think this evening, one, one of our goals is to get, provide direction on where we're going to go next with potential voting at the next council meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, am I okay to speak to that? So in talking with deputy city manager, who is away enjoying his vacation, he had asked that we could, if we can, get potential direction. We would be prepared, as the city manager was saying earlier in the meeting, to bring back a map if we thought, or two or whatnot at the next meeting, which is on July 25th.
Okay. Right. Well, in that case, I guess I'd like just to begin by saying I, I want to trust the expertise of the city staff. And I appreciate, you know, the ranking of recommendations. And particularly, I know actual firsthand that there will be growth in Ward Three in the coming years. I know there are projects underway out there and, and planned. So I really want to advocate for supporting Plan Two, which allows the most growth for that ward and keeps the population more equal across the nine wards. Thank you.
I agree.
And it also keeps the downtown together, right?
It does. Or it brings it together because it's currently split, but yes.
Councilmember Emig and then Monty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm interested, Leslie, because you spent so much time looking at this. I was thinking about the nature of the population growth. How would you account for, say, the significant growth in Ward Eight and the less, you know, significant depletion in Ward Seven? And is this the kind of thing that you, that might happen more and more as we go forward? Not that you have a crystal ball, but I'm just curious about the, the shape of our community and how, as we really think of the, well, the implications of whatever we do today or next month, you know, how that will have an impact.
Yeah, I think, as you said, no crystal ball to know where we're going and that we hope for growth. But, I mean, it's apparent, not just in numbers, right? But in being out on that, the east side of Bloomington, that there's growth happening there. The precinct shapes, right, are out of our hands in that sense. The Bloomington Election Commission determines our precincts. And to comment to that, just as a side note, they also will be doing, Jeff maybe can speak to it a little bit more, new precincts or in a, I'm not sure how quickly we know that's going to happen. Steve might be, their attorney might be able to tell us more. Jeff might know. But there has been conversation, I know with Troy and with Jeff, about the precincts maps that will be realigned and the goal, at least the way it's been relayed to me, is that they will try to realign or draw the precincts within the wards as you would approve them. So, you know, we won't be back at the table, hopefully, fingers crossed, next year, doing this. But that's kind of, you know, the take on the precinct side, you know. And the growth side, I think our goals are just to go as low on the population deviation as we can in the sense of that 8742. So from that sense, Plan Two is the one that, that meets the population deviation out of the ones presented. And I want to be clear that that's just the ones that are presented. There are other options out there. This is just the best that we came up with.
Well, thank you for your, your work on this. And it will be important just to keep an eye on representation across all of our wards as we move forward, especially given the, the importance that the city has placed on ensuring that there are representative voices. So I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Monty?
I just wanted to share that I also support Plan Two, the staff's recommended plan based on the various data sets. It sounds like it ranked both in both accounts and it sounds like you guys have put a tremendous amount of effort into this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilmember Ward?
Yes, I'd like to just clarify something with regard to map number three. So this is the one map that has the vertical option as opposed to the horizontal option. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, pla- the public plan one. And actually, Phil, if you wouldn't mind, will you put Plan Three up for us, please? So out of the staff-presented ones, this is the one that has the, the vertical alignment. If we pop back to Plan One, which is the minimal moves, it's kind of a combo, right? It's, it's a play off of what our, our current is. I would call it, you know, more horizontal because of the way that it kind of stretches across with the orange. But then you see the pink dial down. If you'll go to the public plan, please, you'll see that same bottom corner, you know, kind of is more similar to, I guess, what I would call Plan One. So yes, Plan Three has that more compact vertical.
And you said earlier that really, in terms of the difference it makes in compactness, it's irrelevant. It's, I mean, statistically, very, very minimal.
It was one, yeah, it was one point off. Plan One is 2.85, Plan Two is 2.8, Plan Three is three, just over three. And then Plan Four is. three, just over three, and then Plan Four is two point nine-one. So it's even less than that. It's like a tenth away.
Right. So what makes Plan Three third instead of first or second?
So in terms of the population deviation, let's see, so.
Two point two-nine.
Yeah, they're both two point two-nine. So it's just when you get to the compaction. The compaction difference is two point eight and three point oh-two.
So it's, it's almost nothing.
Yeah, there, and that's what I was commenting to earlier. A lot of these, they, I mean, they get within a tenth of a point of each other. And similar to, you know, when we were talking about the, the race disparities earlier, you know, yes, I, I might, if I move something around, it might take one from this minority, but if it gave it to the other minority and didn't create a, you know, a delusion in any sense, it makes it more difficult. So these are all great plans. And I would really, really mean it when I say I would support any of them.
So I would just like to say to my fellow council members, given that there is no deviation in population and there's almost no deviation in compaction, I would, I would entreat you to consider the public comment that has been made and the issue that has been raised about the vertical versus horizontal structure in, in as much as it is conceivable that with a horizontal ward system, there could be nobody except the alderperson for Ward Seven representing the geographic west side of Bloomington, which was the reason why we even have a ward system to begin with. Back when, when this was first put in place, the whole issue was representation east versus west. And while I don't want us to get into a east versus west thing, I think what we do, if we set up this, wi- if we go with Plan Two, we are setting ourselves up again for this whole east versus west divide. And I entreat you to reconsider that the west side interests oftentimes are different from many areas of the east side and that we, we just can't lose some kind of balance in that way. So of the ones that are presented here, I would, I would lean toward the third map rather than the second.
One of the things, if I could, so when we were talking about the difference between Plan Three and, and Two, one of the things, we, we focused on the bottom south. So the, the bottom right with Words One and Two being in vertical versus horizontal. One of the things we didn't talk about is the upper right-hand corner with Maps Five, let's see, Five, Nine and Three, so Three, Five, Nine. And that's where we were talking about that, the one thing that Two and Four, or Two does is that it brings Ward Three into a population of nine thousand one hundred and two. Rather than in Two, you see it at eight thousand five hundred twenty-six. So that, that potential growth that was considered there is different. And then also it keeps some larger subdivisions that are divided amongst multiple wards. So there is a difference with Two and Three, and we can, Phil, if you wouldn't mind, going to Three. And then, so if we, if we pay attention to the upper right-hand corner, light blue, red and light green, and then go backwards to Two, there's just a little bit of a cleanup that happens there as well that we hadn't addressed when we were talking about the horizontal versus the, the vertical. And, yeah, like I said, it's, it's the population change, the, the thought on future growth that will happen in that particular ward and then pulling together some subdivisions. But again, all, all great plans.
I just have a quick question.
Quick question, okay. Grant and then Montney and then.
Do you happen to have a layover that we could take? Map Two, lay it over the top of, of Map Three, lay it over the top of Map Four and, and help visualize the differences just in the layout of the maps with the, the colors and the lines. Might be kind of difficult to do, but I didn't know if you happen to have any type of layover.
I don't tonight, but it's definitely something if, say, you know, we heard we were between Two and Three or something like that. And then we wanted to dive, you know, in further at the next meeting before a vote came or something like that. It, we have the capability of laying them over. Another thing that, you know, we talked about, Troy and I was, if you wanted to see, you know, the precinct, you know, differences in that, in that sense too, with that layover and how that happens. So we're capable of doing that. I just don't have it today, but we're not voting today, so that's great. And we could look at, you know, something like that at the next meeting if that was preferred.
Okay. If we were to vote, want to vote next week, would we need to make a motion tonight to say, let's vote on this next week or just bring it?
No, there's no motion tonight. Just trying to get a sense of the council.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Montney.
Thank you. So when you're talking about the population deviation percentages, those are averages. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So that when you look beyond the average and you look at the distribution by ward, that's where you get into trickiness. With an eight percent population growth in Ward Three, which is very conservative, probably in light of just things that I've been advised in a couple of different precincts, that ward would already be over ten thousand. So I, I don't know, to Councilmember Ward's perspective, if there's some type of a, you know, a hybrid there between what you've done on the east side with the cleanup that you're showing on Plan Two and the decisions in the other areas. Because when, when we're talking about it being just a fractional difference, that's with everything aggregated, not with the wards drawn with their specific boundaries.
Yeah, and I don't want to create more work that might not be needed, but as you alluded to, you know, one of the things that we could do is, I think that we actually did have a map that kept the upper right-hand corner this way and then had the bottom left-hand corner in the vertical. And so, you know, if that's something that, hey, we, you know, bring it back on Monday, but we would like to see it in that, that would throw a sixth map in. But then you could also, we could do a layover comparison with Two and Three and then move forward from there.
I would like to see something like that.
Councilmember Bullen.
You know, I understand the comments about east versus west, and I don't think that's ever going to go away. For me, if my ward changes in shape, it really doesn't matter. I could also say Ward Two is an orphan. You know, we don't really have a lot of growth. We don't have any. It's a food desert, you know, there's no retail, no groceries, nothing, no bus service. So, you know, we also have means. And the population distribute, not distribution, what is it, deviation really won't change. You know, like you had said, each ward is what, thirty-sixty as far as population variation?
Around and about.
Yeah.
So thirty-seven.
That is true. If you take away east veterans from Ward Two, I'm, I'm losing the high-density, low-income housing Tracy Drive area. And I'm picking up the West Oakland Alexander population, which is basically mirrors. But again, I think that Ward Two has stretched out so far is the fact that we don't have any commercial. It's all residential, all compact, and a lot of that green stuff, there's nothing there. So, thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. So I think we kind of have some direction, right? Couple of maps overlay.
That's right. I'm, I'm thinking I bring back the other map that does the upper, switches those corners around like we talked about. And then Two and Three, and we do some overlays.
Okay. For next meeting. Okay, sounds good. All right. So now we're going to move on to city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just three slides. We have six new employees to welcome to the city. We have Trudy in Economic Community Development. We have Jim in Parks. We have Sean in Economic Community Development. And then we have Eric in Arts and Entertainment. Corinna is at the hub and Pearl, he is new to the zoo. Next slide, please. Lower Park Zoo's Back School Ice Cream Social and School Supply Drive. That is August sixth, twelve to three at the zoo. Last slide. Christmas in July, Open Skate at the Bloomington Ice Center. It's on July thirtieth, one-thirty to three. And that'll do it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second. All right, second by Councilmember Becker. All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?